Good afternoon, everybody. Afternoon, early evening. My name is Jennifer Murray. I'm the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction for East Haven Public Schools, and I am fortunate enough to receive the honor of presenting the mid-year reflection of some of the things that we are using to reflect on our teaching practice, our student performance, and our overall educational program. So I thank you all for being here today. And I wanted to start you off to remind us of the fact that there's many ways to measure student progress. So this is a little reminder from the 2019-2020 Middle School Glee Club. So obviously, just trying to bring it back to our students, everything that we do, we're measuring, we're reflecting on growth and performance. But as the students state, there's 525,600 minutes in a year. And there's a lot of things that we do at the curriculum level, at the classroom level, at the district and school level to support students. You're going to get an overview today. And I'm going to just give you a sort of a sense of, based on our conversations in board meetings and the limits of time, so we have an hour today. So the purpose of today's workshop is for us to provide a brief overview of our district assessment framework in alignment to our vision of the graduate, and report on some universal screening and benchmark data in literacy and math, and provide a glimpse into some related curriculum-based measurements, as well as clarify how we are using different types of measures to inform instruction and practice. So at this time, we will be inviting the board, I'm hoping, to schedule some additional workshops. Because at this time, we do not have, in an hour, there's a lot of assessments to cover. So we're happy to come back with additional workshops, and I'd invite you to think about others as we go along. That may include high school SAT, PSAT, the Smarter Balanced Summitive, an update on the unveiling of the 612 Math Curriculum, NGSS Assessments, that's the Next Generation Science Standards, and as you go, I really am going to give you a glimpse into our processes for data-driven decision-making and school-based and teacher-centered principles, whether it's at the school level, at a PTO meeting, or a district or school-based data team. I'm happy to support that. So that is what we are doing. What we are not doing is giving you every single assessment that's taken in the history of the year, but just some of the screening and benchmark data. I'm going to talk a little bit about what that is. But first, I'm going to talk about what drives our assessment practices. And so as many of you know, we are focused on creating a shared vision of what the East Haven Public Schools graduate needs as those core competencies that's going to help them succeed in career, college, and civic life. Because we as schools are preparing students to live in the wide world out there. And so we have identified, or our vision of the graduate team has identified the following components: creative problem solver, informed thinker, responsible citizen, powerful and effective communicator, and goal-directed and resilient individual. And why am I sharing this work? Because our assessment framework has specific assessments that are linked to some of these core competencies and help us measure student progress in these areas. So for example, our creative problem solvers are learning about themselves as they solve problems and persevere through them with curriculum-based measurements such as unit and cumulative assessments, Smarter Balanced Interim Assessments, our Acadience Math Screener, the Success Maker Suite, and PSAT and SAT. Students are measuring some of their informed thinking skills by bringing in discipline-specific curriculum-based measures such as historical assessments of thinking in social studies classes, or document-based questions in K5, visual arts and music cornerstone assessments, NGSS assessments, and Smarter Balanced Interim Assessments. Students are asked to become powerful and effective communicators. So we give a lot of writing assessments. At the elementary level, we call it a performance-based assessment where students do critical reading and writing and are self-reflecting on their goals of being a more effective communicator through using evidence and having a focus and using rich language. Our reading assessments also are included, and those include currently the K-5 DIBELS 8 or 6-12 Lexia Rapid Assessment. Again, you see some overlap here, but PSAT and curriculum-based measures. We also want students to be reflecting on themselves and becoming goal-directed and resilient individuals. So assessments may include math performance tasks where students actually reflect on like, how was this problem hard for you and what did you do? How are you going to try, what are you going to try for a new strategy next time? Our mastery-based assessments in grades 6 through 12 that are being developed to align with the vision of the graduate or in some cases exist to provide them with credentials and competencies such as certifications that they can take into their broader career and employment life. We also are looking for ways to enhance the value of an East Haven High School diploma through things like a seal of biliteracy assessment. And finally, our students are responsible citizens, and through their portfolios or rubric self-reflection such as the JMMs Habits of Success, membership in their classroom community through participation in restorative circles, or getting feedback on their citizenship through teacher conversations and interactions. Those are all ways that our assessment framework assesses and measures, not just points. And I always like to call it the yearbook photo versus the snapshot. And so some of our assessments are meant to be one point in time. That's just a quick snapshot of what we see that day, whatever your hair looks like. And some are where we try to get dressed up. So in writing, for example, a process piece where a student really tries to polish their work. And then there's those prompts that might be something where they do it in a 45-minute period, and we just sort of see the types of things that they're retaining. So I just want to talk a little bit about that. So again, the types of assessments that we use include the Universal Screener or Benchmark Assessments. The purpose of these is to measure growth on standardized and norm-referenced measures. This helps us to identify students who may require intervention. And the frequency is generally triennial. Beginning of year, middle of the year. Not every three years, but beginning, middle, and end of year. So to inform, we use these to inform student personalized learning goals, identify the instructional focus of students. Our teachers actually have a spreadsheet where they identify small group instructional FOKI in their teacher-centered instructional data team meetings. So this data is used regularly with some systems that help support our students. We also have curriculum-based assessment, which measures students' progress towards identified success criteria that's outlined in the unit, which is sort of our unit of measure for the instructional program. A course is broken up into units, and each unit, we want to measure how the kids are progressing. We also have those benchmark assessments that build upon seeing if the kids are taking things from one unit to another. So those are outlined in Atlas. They include things like performance tasks and those writing PBAs that I mentioned before. These help students set goals based on their current level of performance and give targeted feedback to improve their mastery of standards. Interim assessments are another tool that we use that are outlined in the Smarter Balanced System. They're used in various ways in the district, and we've used them in the past as pre- and post-assessments. We found that wasn't as powerful because generally the interim assessments are five to six questions, and it was hard to tease out whether the students were just sort of remembering the questions and performing better or if they were really applying the material. So what we decided to do to expose students to the Smarter Balanced Platform as well as get a sense of how they're doing was to, in most cases, use these as a mid-unit assessment checkpoint. And then identify patterns. What question did most of the kids get right? What questions did most of the kids or a large majority of the kids need some extra support with? And then design the cycle of assessment for the follow-up, the unit summative that's mostly to reflect on how they performed and how they applied those things. So it would vary by content, but generally, these are topic-specific, and I'll show you what that means later. But they're given about once per topic per year. In some cases, they may be given twice, and again, it varies by content and grade level. The use is again to identify patterns in student responses, offer feedback on instruction and curriculum efficacy, and help students experience those standards-based items that they're expecting to see on both our in-district designs assessments, summative assessments, and the state summative assessments, which is the Smarter Balanced PSAT and SAT. So again, this reflects on our cycle of inquiry. We look at the data and we define a problem of practice. We say, what is the story that this information is telling us? And then we look at adult actions. There's a lot of things that we can't we can do to support students and families. We can't fix everything, global pandemic included, but we do have key adult actions where we can really hone in on. And then we can take those actions and then assess the results of how we're doing. And so that's sort of the story of how we use this data that I'm sharing with you today. And again, to orient you on where you are, it's kind of like our map. So the bird's eye view that I'm providing to the board today is more of a district-level view. So that's where we are. We're here. But our system is encompassing of a lot of other systems. So at the school level, they have building leadership teams or school-level data teams where they discuss and reflect on the different lessons that we're learning from student data. And in some cases, they may have multiple types of teams that are reflecting on different types of data. For example, there's attendance teams and early intervention teams and general instructional improvement and curriculum teams, department teams. But those all are involved in the teacher-centered instructional data team process. So we've been partnering to have that district-level view. And then those teacher-centered and school-based data teams begin to bring some things to the surface as we discuss the next steps and adult actions that we can use. So I just wanted to orient you to sort of what we do here on a weekly, daily, monthly basis to reflect on the data that you're about to see. And again, because we want to be in this leading quadrant. As you can see, when we're leading, we have high results, we have a good understanding of what leads to those results, and we're likely to replicate success. When we're learning, we might have lower results, but we understand why we're getting the results we're getting, and we won't keep making the same mistakes. And I like to think that the evidence suggests that we're really living in here. We do have some areas where their results are low, but we've identified some key adult actions and are seeing growth in those areas where those adult actions are being implemented with fidelity. And I'll tell you the story of small group instruction as one example of that. And so that's where we are. So I'm going to start with a little review of K-5 instructional assessment data around literacy and numeracy, so reading and math. And again, so this is, you'll see, orange in these slides pretty consistently are reflective of beginning and middle of the year for the school year 2019-2020. Where you see a gradient pattern in the orange, it means the assessment itself was changed in some way. But in this case, this assessment, beginning quantity discrimination screener for kindergarten, was the same in grade K. So I can just point that out here. So as you can see, this is the data for kindergarten on our math screener. So we started off at a much higher level in this year than we did to the previous year. And so again, one of the things, one of the caveats of teacher-centered instructional data teams is not to make judgments on the data. It's just to say what we see. So our teachers, instead of saying, well, I think it's because, because we really don't know exactly, but we can wonder, we can ask questions. So I would suggest, as you look at the data, we're wondering, what's the reason why students in this beginning of year and the last beginning of the year had a difference in how they arrived to us? And another question is, you know, there was a larger change in growth between beginning of the year and middle of the year this year versus last year. So those are some things that we notice about this dataset. And those are the kinds of conversations that we have in our teacher-centered instructional data teams. We start with just what we observe before we move into judgment. Oh, it's because of this, oh, it's because of that. And then we collect the data to determine this. So as you can see, there's a bit of a gradient pattern here. So that means in 2019-2020, we were giving a beginning quantity discrimination screener. We wanted to raise the level of rigor because we felt that students were progressing nicely. And so we moved to a computation assessment in the 2020-2021 school year. So we're not comparing apples and oranges necessarily, but we're comparing like Granny Smith apples and Red Delicious apples. So it's a little bit of a different measure that gives us a better sense. And it's a measure that we can do all three times per year for this Acadience Math Screener. Grade two, again, this was the same measure for 2019-2020 and this year as well. So you can see the difference in beginning to middle of year in both instructional cycles. And if you would like me to slow down on any of these slides, you can just sort of, I think you can unmute yourself and let me know, or ask a question. I believe participants may have an opportunity to ask questions. We have a time at the end where you can raise your hand. But certainly, I'm happy to take questions if there's any that come across. I'm not sure if the Q and A is visible to participants at this time, but I will. So write down your questions and refer to the slide title, and I'll be able to get back to that for you. So grade three, again, the orange is reflective of the last school year. And the BOY this year in MOY is in blue, and that will be consistent throughout the slides. So the other thing to mention is that when we get this data, we review some of the patterns and some of the areas that, so we're to be leading versus lucky, what is happening in grade three? What are some of the patterns and things that we can name? So as we begin to move from the observation to inquiry cycle is identifying the patterns and looking at key adult actions that were made in those grade levels that had higher levels of success and growth between BOY and MOY. And we can begin to work with our school-based, district-based, and teacher-centered grade-level data teams to, you know, plan to replicate some of those actions. And so in this case, I have some reports that teacher-centered instructional data teams and small group instruction in some of the areas where we saw higher levels of growth are things that our teachers are working really hard. And in some cases, that is happening in those areas where teachers are not seeing as high level of growth. So it is also important to remember that the students from the orange cohort is a different group of students than the students that are represented by the blue. This is not a cohort comparison. This is just a same measure over two different years of kindergartners across the district. So again, in grade four, this is the Acadience Math Computation Screener data. And you know that their levels in both cases are, for both BOY and MOY are lower. There is some growth from BOY to MOY, but not at the level that we saw in 2019-2020. And this is grade five. And I would say the same pattern emerges. There seems to be, they're entering at BOY at a higher level. They are making some growth, but it does not appear that they're making the same trajectory of growth between the BOY and MOY of last year. So I want to talk a little bit about the assessments that we gave in 2019-2020 for early elementary reading, K-5 reading. And this is just a picture of, for example, kindergarten. So kindergarten, we moved at the recommendation of some of the research and the best impact for students to receive, the best amount of data to provide really targeted interventions. We switched, we're using the DIBELS, which is called the Dynamic Indicators of Basic Early Literacy Skills. So again, their dynamics, they're ever-changing. In the previous old DIBELS Next, students in kindergarten at the beginning of the year were only measured on one measure. It was called first sound fluency. So if I see the word cat, I can identify that C makes a c sound. Now, in the beginning of the year, this year, students in kindergarten are measured in their ability to name letters, segment phonemes, the different sounds, nonsense word fluency, which is both correct letter sounds and whole words read, and word recall fluency. And as you can see, in last year, the beginning, middle, and end of the year were different measures entirely. So we have first sound fluency and then these other measures. And then in the end of year, we drop first sound fluency. So we found it was very difficult to set goals, take action, measure results because we didn't always have the same set of standards that we were measuring on. So those measures that contributed to a composite score have increased significantly. And I can kind of show you what that looks like. So I highlighted kindergarten because in beginning of the year, there was one measure, and the score that was required to meet benchmark was 26. In the beginning of the year, this year, there were five measures, and the score that would allow a kindergartner to meet benchmark is 306 as a composite score. So you can see the differences and changes. And again, we went from two, three, and three measures in first grade to a consistent seven measures in first grade. First grade is an area where those key literacy skills are really important, and we wanted as much data as possible to be able to support designing high-quality Tier One instructions, small groups for every student, as well as interventions for students. The old DIBELS had four, five, and five measures. Again, the new measure has six measures for all three grade levels, third grade, four, four, and four, and six. So there's, and then in fourth and fifth grade, they have the same three measures moving forward through that. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. And as you can see, the criteria for each of the grade levels have changed. So for example, and again, that course, even in fourth and fifth grade, benchmark for the beginning of the year in 2019-2020 was a composite score of 290, but for 2020-2021 is a composite score of 346. So we are wanting very rigorous standards, but also because we know that these pieces of the puzzle are what helps our readers really begin to grasp all of those skills that make them likely to have a successful reading life. So again, those measures drop off. It gives us a clearer way to define growth as a district. We were limited in that way because we weren't, again, measuring apples to apples. Now, it's not just Granny Smith and Red Delicious. It's all the same apple moving through beginning, middle, and end of the year. And our kids grow, just like apples, our kids grow at different paces. So these are just benchmarks. So what we do, and again, for those parents that are out there, I think this is really important to say, this is not a measure of whether your kid is, many children develop at different levels. We use this data, and then we triangulate the data. We talk about the child as a whole child, as a reader, as a member of the community. And that's why I began with the vision of the graduate. So there are many children for whom early reading skills might require some additional intervention and supports, but they may have a really excellent aptitude in math or science or high vocabulary skills and expressive language, or be very creative writers. So these are just a few measures, and I just want to keep reiterating that to our families. So this is the DIBELS screener, excuse me, for grade K. So this is, the orange is DIBELS Next, and the grade, the DIBELS 8 is the blue. So as you can see, the number of students who got a 26 on that one measure at the beginning of the year is reflected in the orange, and the number of students who got a 306 on the multiple five screeners in BOY is reflected in the blue. And again, there's a large number of pieces of growth in the kindergarten. This orange is reflective of the four measures, 119 score. And at mid-year, it's reflective of a score of 306 on the five measures. So I just want to make that clear to individuals that are looking at that. Okay, actually, 373, I'm sorry, I misspoke. So that goes from 306 to 373. So even if they maintained the 306 that they had at the beginning of the year, if they didn't, if this data, the percentage of students who met that benchmark would decline if those students between a 306 and 373 maintained their performance levels. So this is DIBELS grade one. And again, in grade one, there were two measures at the beginning of the year and three measures at the middle of the year, as reflected in the orange. And at the beginning of the year this year, seven measures with a required score of 331. And this would be reflective of a 386 or above for students being at goal at the mid-year. And again, grade two, this is reflective of a score of 141 at beginning of the year here in the orange, 190 or above here in the orange, and this blue represents students who are in the 330 and above range and over here a 385 and above range. And you see grade three, this is reflective of 220 as a composite score in the beginning of the year and 285 at mid-year. Beginning of the year for 2020 is reflective of a score of 332 in the blue here and 385 in the blue here. And again, we do see some growth in grade four. This area was the beginning of the year. In fourth grade, this orange is reflective of a score of 290, and that's on the same three measures that they've been taking in the past. But the score does increase in the DIBELS 8, and then the 330 in the mid-year last year. This is reflective of students who scored above 346 or above. And this is reflective of students who scored 392 or above in grade four. And in grade five, this orange bar indicates students who scored 357 or above at the beginning of the year. And this is students who scored 372 or above. This is reflective of students who scored at 351 or above. And this is reflective of students who scored 395 or above. So that's just kind of a story that these DIBELS screeners are telling us. Before I move on to 612, is there any individual that wants to ask some questions about our elementary benchmark data? Hearing none, I will move on through the presentation. Oops, we heard it from our JMMs students. But again, we are looking in 6 through 12 for them, you know, as they move up in grade levels or moving from learning to read to reading to learn. And so you'll see measures of math and literacy and informational literary at the 612 level. So I'll be sharing those with you. So I wanted to kind of tell you a story and unpack how we look at big swaths of data at the district level. So I'll give you an example. This is how we looked at our 6 through 12 Universal Screening Benchmark by subcategory. So this is all students who took this assessment in grades 6 through 12. This is a universal screener called the Lexia Rapid Assessment. It's norm-referenced, and it tells us where students fall with regard to district, national, and state norms. And it provides us with information on the student's reading success probability. And it provides us with information on the student's reading success probability, their capacity to engage in skills related to word recognition, vocabulary knowledge, syntactic knowledge, how sentences and words are put together and reading comprehension. So one thing we did when we looked at the data was we identified that there was some discrepancies. What we like to use generally for mastery, um, and is at the district level and at the student level is depending on the measure, about three fourths or above or 80% is even better. Um, would indicate that a student or a group of students is sort of reaching that level of mastery that I, that's, that's what we're looking for. We want that would, that would indicate, um, that if we're getting closer to that number, that's really where we want to be, um, because there is always variability with individual students. Um, but we just, we want to measure our curriculum against really high standards and measure our instructional program. So when we see that in, in many cases, they're really working hard on word recognition and deepening their vocabulary. Um, and those are getting towards the hundreds and seventies and eighties. Again, not exactly perfect, but closer to where we'd like to be. But we noted that reading comprehension, um, is not in that same place. And again, in all of those areas from BOI to MOI, as you'll note, there's no orange. So this is strictly 2020, 2021 data. Um, you only see orange when you see last year's data. Um, we see in each of those areas, there's small levels of growth, but some growth. Um, but we see a decline in reading comprehension. So that's something that we really are concerned about as a team, as a district team. We really want to drill down to that. So we look at that. And then we say, okay, so let's look at just reading comprehension and we pull some of the data. And we look at where our students are, um, with above at and below grade level. So I'll give you a second to look at that chart. And you know, if there's any, if there's any patterns that begin to emerge, we begin. And again, above and at grade level would be sort of the combined total of what we want our students to know and be able, um, to do. So we're looking for something closer to the 80% ranges or 75. Um, and so we notice the number of students that are below grade level and certain grades. Um, you know, might be higher than we would like. And so I don't know if anybody would like to ask any questions about that. But this is sort of the process that we might go through at the district or school based team and talk about what patterns are we noticing? And so then we might drill down and sort of see, um, there's a higher number of students. Well, I see Mrs. Pellegrino. Yes. Um, can I unmute you or does Melissa have to?
I, I muted myself.
Go ahead.
Are those pretend percentage numbers?
This is percent of students at above and below grade level. Yes.
Thank you.
Yep. Um, so, so that's sort of the process that we use. We drill down, we sort of get, get more granular. At, you know, sort of a visual of how our students are doing. This is 12th grade students. Um, and so as you can see, this is the national norms. The 25th, these are students who are performing between the 25th and 75th nat percentile. And this is this green strong, stronger line of students that are performing, uh, above, you know, the, the 50th percentile. And so actually, when you get into the live portion of the system, you can click on all of these and see who these kids are. This, the, the system will highlight a name of a student. And we can use that for instructional planning and meet with our, our teams and say, while this student moved from below, we can actually see whether this went up. There were more kids from the beginning of the, then from the MOY, this is MOY data. So the arrow tells us more students were above grade level. Um, at MOI than before. Um, and we reduce the number of students who were below grade level. Um, so we want to make sure that we're doing that. So we then diet, we drilled down. So I'm going to share with you the language arts smarter balanced interim assessments. Uh, Mr. Hennessy, question?
How come the number of students is so low?
The number of students?
Yeah.
Um. Again, in, in what slide? Because I'm only able.
That one right, that one right there.
This is just a screenshot of one of the schools. So in the system, I can create a district report. So that is the number, about the number of students. Um, does that, is that not reflective of grade 12?
No.
So I would, I would have to speak with, you know, it could be in this particular case. Um, I don't have the answer whether there were students that were, um, we do have a number of students, we try to get remote students that are pretty, I think most of our, at the K five level got our remote. So I can't answer, I can't answer that question. Um, but perhaps if Mr. D'Nuzzo has, has any knowledge of that.
All right. So I got a question for you. If, if you're dealing with percentages, and I'm, I'm guessing there's like 75 kids that aren't in that data.
Right.
Your percentages are much lower.
At the high school level and, and I can certainly schedule a follow-up conversation with Lisa Velius, who was our high school instructional leader. Much of our universal screener data is meant to identify students who need reading intervention at, um, and it's really a high focus at grades K through 11. Um, but at the, at the time, unless we get, we do give students, we give all students the reading comprehension screener. I would have to check with our instructional leader for, for language arts at grades 11 and 12. In some cases, if a student has sort of pat, what's the word? I guess tested out. So if you have, if, if like, for example, in math, if you are an honors student in high level calculus class, you might not be required to take the math screener that's at that level. Because it would, you, the screener, the, which is this is a screener, is designed to flag students who are in need of intervention. So if you are, if you are in a, so that, and again, I'm, I'm going to be very blunt and say, that is my belief that, especially at the 12th grade level, that there would be students who might be in honors programs or things who would have reached a level on their SAT score that may waive the requirement to take the screener. Does that make sense? And Vinnie?
Yeah, I mean, I guess.
Yeah. Um, but we're looking, like I, I can say with, you know, that are, for example, the K to five teachers, like they know to the, to the day, whether the one or two remote learners weren't able to be able to be administered the assessment. So we're really, it's a wide network casting and I have notes of who they're still, if there's one or two, there may be one or two students at different schools that maybe, you know, have traveled or have been in quarantine and they're still. Um, but generally this data should be reflective of, of a large percentage of our students.
We, can I ask a question?
Sure.
So we should have that data too, of how many weren't tested at each level, just so we know, you know.
I would say it's more appropriate for grades like 11 and 12 where they get, but I can, I can certainly follow up with that. Um, again, when, are you looking for the data about like how many remote learners we weren't able to test?
Yeah. I mean, and that, that doesn't mean you did a horrible job of anything.
No, I mean, it's, it's like singletons. It's very few kids.
Okay. That's what you're saying.
But especially at the elementary level, they know to the letter which kids they're missing. And it's very few because we really, they are, our elementary school team. I can, you, if you see a reading coach or math coach, please give them a COVID safe high five for me because they really, they remotely administered every single assessment. And in many cases, these assessments are given sort of one-on-one. You have to let a student read and then you record what they're, I mean, they're, they're robust. They're, they're not like, here's a piece of paper. Um, so our, our teams worked really, really hard to administer these assessments.
I get that. I'm talking about this test too, the reading comprehension.
Yeah, I can, what I'll do is I can provide you at the next board meeting, a, a person, uh, like I can go into the data and I can find out the total number of students that took the test.
Nope.
But so I give you a number of the students that are in the population.
I'm just trying to reaffirm what I thought I heard. So 144 students took this test, but you're saying not everyone had to take this test in grade 12.
I'm not saying that because I'm saying the, the person who would be able to answer that with a firm, who's got, who meets the criteria for being waived is, is not here this evening. But generally this test is a screener of, for students for whom they, they. So there may be a, a point at which you've maxed, you know, so for, for, I know for a fact that there are math students who, for whom those classes, they do not take the screener. Um, because if you have passed out of advanced level math class, you're not at risk for needing intervention. So the screener, the state allows us to waive the screening data. That doesn't mean they don't take all of our other assessments, but they don't. Does that make sense? Like if there, if you're not at risk, we don't need to kind of keep screening them, although if they were at risk, if a teacher that was in one of those classes noted, hey, this child seems to be declining. We would certainly have the capacity to administer it to them.
So are you differentiating what data we're getting? Like this is a screener test. This is a, a, a additional benchmark that everybody takes.
It actually says, it actually says that in my slides. This is, whether it's a screener, I'm trying to be very clear for you.
I know. I'm sorry.
A screening benchmark.
So this is a universal screening. That means everybody took it.
Well, in the case, everybody who would be at risk in certain grade levels in the higher grades, 11 and 12th grade.
So what do you base that on? You just based it on what?
So at the high school, they level their classes. So if you've met your criteria for being in a high level reading class, you're no longer, you're, you're not. I, I will, I will follow up with.
I understand that.
Yeah.
I'm talking about in general, this whole presentation. Are we differentiating between the benchmarks that all children take? Beginning of the year, middle of the year, end of the year, or we just testing? In, I'm talking grade six, seven and eight too.
This evening, I'm sharing with you universal screening benchmarks, which are taken by almost all of our students. And I believe there may be cases at the very higher high school grades where there may be level considerations where they may test out. But I'm not definitively answering that question because Lisa's not here and I, I don't. I believe that to be true, but I want to make sure I have the correct, accurate. I could tell you which classes and what criteria that would be more. But, um, but generally a universal screening assessment is to define kids who are at risk. I'm sorry, am I not understanding Tia?
No, you, you are, but I just want to make sure that it's like explained that way to the public because they're going to think, you know, it could, it could skew the, the, the image that we're getting. Because I don't know, it's, it, it, a universal screening is a benchmark. But are you guys giving everybody like in grade six, the same benchmark?
Everybody in grade six takes the Lexia rapid assessment.
There you go. That's what.
Everybody in grade seven, grade eight. Um, and I would have to talk about the high school level because at a certain point, when students enter into leveled classes and they're deemed to be taking high level and honors classes, they may, the risk for them to need intervention.
Is less.
Less likely because they are, they are achieving at high levels in runners and, and above.
Thank you. You did answer my question.
Risk. Yes. Okay.
Absolutely did. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
I didn't mean to be confusing either.
No, not at all. I want to be clear and I, this, we live in, you know, so I want to, I'm trying to, even and I'm naming the slides, but this is really good feedback to you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mrs. Pellegrino?
Uh, possibly for the public watching, uh, in, in a future presentation like this, it would be a good idea to put out the results of, um, SATs, AP classes in comparison.
As I, yes, absolutely.
That reading comprehension for 12th grade made us look awful and we're not that awful.
Well, and that's where I kind of use this as a tool to explain what, how we triangulate the data. Because if you, and again, we don't have the necessarily the answer, but you may imagine that students in the spring of 12th grade may have different um, test-taking interest when college applications are completed. And you know, we, that's not a cause or an answer that's, I can definitively say, but we want, we use the cycle of inquiry to ask those questions. And then we look at other assessments, which I'll share with you, which is, uh, reading, um, this is smarter balanced interim assessments. I'll give you an example. Um, where we have over 60% of our students in the read literary text are, um, at standard and combining at or near with above standard. Those, that's, that's a large number of our students who are reading level literary text. Um, that sort of matches a closer look of what we're looking for. Reading informational text, as you can see, um, is an area of focus. Um, we want to make sure that we focus on that and hone in on that. So these are benchmarks, these are mid-unit assessments. So students would be given an opportunity to take these assessments in the middle of the, generally in the middle of the unit. Sometimes they're given, you know, um, using a different format. But this would then help the teachers look at the items and say, okay, what kinds of items did you get wrong? Let's practice. And then they might design some items to help the students um, reflect on character or things that they may have had a difficulty with on these assessments. So this is a call, this is not a screener. This is like a mid-unit assessment checkpoint that helps us to, and again, going back to that first slide, students are setting goals and thinking about their thinking. Um, this is another example, uh, for seventh grade. Um, where they're, um, reading literary is in green and reading informational text is in blue. So again, we're.
A beginning, a middle or an end?
Not, this is what we call it. These are, when I showed that first slide at the beginning, I sort of talked about the different types of assessments. So this is a interim assessment. It could be used as a mid-unit checkpoint that provides someative support for students, but also tells us patterns as a district. We need to work on liter, informational text. So it's not beginning, middle and end. We might not give this three times. Um, but we would then use this data to help children define their personal learning goals. And again, identify the standards that they're getting and that they're not getting. So we can design, you know, instructional interventions for, or just curriculum improvements based on that.
And, and these are all percentages again.
This is the percentage of students who are at each performance level.
So we have more at and above in reading literacy.
Literary. Yep.
I'm sorry, read, read literary. We, we, we just call it different. Um, but so like at or near standard, we do have quite a few for the read informational.
Right.
So.
But we have more students below standard in that area. So we want to really drill down and get to the bottom of why and provide some additional supports for those students. Um, whether it's through an intervention, an acceleration model or improvements in the curriculum. What we can do is we can look at this assessment and see that every kid got number five wrong. We can say, we need more practice with things like number five. They're really not being able to identify the text structure that the author is using. We need to give some more practice in that area. So this is the kind of assessment that that's what that tells us. Um, this is another set of language arts smarter balance in terms, this is eighth grade. And so, um, tells a little bit of a different story. So we know that there are some individuals at the eighth grade that we want to maybe work with on, um, literary text. And so what we would then do at a teacher-centered instructional data team is look at the items and you can say, well, what did, what are we missing? What kinds of questions did the most students get wrong? What kinds of questions did most of the students get right? We won't spend time focusing on the things we know that they've got. Mr. Hennessy?
What's the difference between literary and informational?
So think about it like fiction and nonfiction.
Okay.
Yep. Literary is like, could be poetry, stories, novels. And nonfiction is sort of any text that would be informational to read. An article, a book, that's tr, you know, true story.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Good question. All right. So, so we do have this other measure. This is a universal screener and it's for six through eight, and it's the reading success probability screener. Um, and so this measure lets us know, um, how, you know, what's the six, what's the likelihood that a student will, you know, um, have some reading success? And so you can see the story that this data tells is that we started off higher at BOY. Um, and our cycle of inquiry, we may talk about what curriculum improvements did we make over the last year? Um, but we also note that the trajectory of growth is not necessarily the same as it has been in years past. And so we would then. And so we would then engage in that cycle of inquiry to see what adult actions we can put in place. Obviously, a global pandemic, attendance concerns, all of those things we, we can try to support and mitigate. But not necessarily control for, um, but we would want to see more growth um, in something like this. And again, this is the grade seven. So you do see a bit of that growth here. Um. And again, starting at a, uh, this is not the same cohort of kids. So this is this year's. Um, this is grade seven, so this is this year's eighth graders. Um, and in the blue is this year's seventh graders, but this gives us a sense of the, that reading success probability for seventh grade. And grade eight. Um. Again, that reading success probability screener um, from BOY to MOY. Um, the, the story that it's telling is, you know, in past years, the trajectory there hasn't been as large of a, a jump from BOY to MOY. Um, but we would want to see, you know, that trajectory be, be different. Um. And again, our, our process would then be to go back to the teams, reflect. Look at the students' performance and their performance on other assessments. Um, other classroom-based, curriculum-based screening, um. Mid-unit checkpoints, there's other measures that we're using, as you saw on that big slide with the gr- the picture of the graduate.
Like, and you just don't want to get caught up though in, in. Like you said, we're in a pandemic. Beginning of the year in nineteen, twenty nineteen to twenty and be, and middle of the year. Now we. Like it's more rigorous, so I know it, I get the difference between the apples and whatnot, but it. A lot of students have gone down in generally throughout the state even, I believe, because. The middle of the year. You know, you can keep finding tests to, to test to the test too, but you would need to really look at. You know. Like you said, look at what, why, and what, what's changed? That they're not increasing knowledge between then, the beginning of the year and now.
Right. And some other research, so I, again. A lot of people say, oh, well, there's no research on global pandemics, but we have some research that we can look at. We have the summer slide. And they've done some sort of projections of like if the typical summer slide of like kids being having school interruptions in the summer. There's also some research from like school interruptions from Katrina and different hurricanes and things. And they say that sort of when there's some, even if there's stagnation, you know, the story that, that some of the research is telling is that. Students, as long as they're sort of maintaining, end up making up that trajectory of growth in, in the long run. So I think we want to make sure we're staying the course. We know the things that we're doing. That work. We know that it's harder to do them in a global pandemic. And we want to continue to do them and continue to reflect and continue to provide those targeted. Times to reflect on the student needs and provide those interventions and accelerations. And not sort of panic and throw everything away because this, you know, there's a little bit of a dip. And we want to really make sure we focus because we know what's working. Um, we can see, and again, and again, I'll tell a little bit of the story at the end of the presentation. Um. This is the, the grade nine reading success probability. Um, this is the grade ten reading success probability. Um, and again, and you see, this is kind of what we would want to see, right? Both years, beginning in a, in, in middle of two thousand nineteen, twenty. It goes up, but the second year it goes up even higher. Um. But there's, you know, so that would be what we would kind of want to see, I think. Um, yeah. And this grade eleven, um. Again, this was sort of February of last year. So I'm not sure how, I don't, I don't know the specific date that it was taken or whether it was. Close enough to the, to the lockdown, but that's the last set of data. But we do see some growth here in that grade eleven. And again, that reading success probability score, if over seventy percent of our students have a score that indicates they're successful. Uh, likely to be successful readers, we may want to look back at their reading comprehension and see what types of questions. Were they lower level? Were they, what kinds of questions were they getting right? What kinds of questions were they getting wrong? What was their, you know, affect when taking the assessment? Um, and so on and so forth. So those are some questions that we would get into.
And, and again, the year was, was very, was, I, I think we should be glad that they came back. And they're um, with more rigor and they scored as well as they did.
Right, right. I, I think, I, you know, the story that I, that I'm hoping to tell is that we're not. We want to be somewhere farther along and we will, and we're going to continue to fight and support. And help our kids with fighting this global pandemic and keeping each other safe. Um, but there are some areas that we can see. Where those adult actions that we focused on. Are, are working and I have some, you know, I have some little thoughts at the end that I'll share. Um, but I wanted to share some math assessments. So again, this is an interim assessment. It's a mid-unit assessment checkpoint that's topic specific. So the green is reflective of students' performance on the number system. And the blue is reflective of students' performance on expressions and equations. And the, this is a sixth grade assessment. The number system is something that's frequently revisited, so they have a seventh grade number system assessment and an eighth grade number system assessment. So this is not the first time they're going to see this. It's recursive. It comes back through the curriculum. We want to make sure they have a deep sense of that number system. Um, and so this is the number system in grade seven. Um. And ratio and proportion in grade seven. And so you can see the number of students that were performing on the number system. You know, this is seventh graders this year and that was sixth graders this year. But we have this three times that they, that they engage in this assessment. So. Um, and then again, this is the um, function. So the number system is now, um, this is functions and expressions and equations. And so this may be one of the uh, first time the students are seeing, um. I would have to have Jen confirm that. I don't know if that's official. Um, but that's a, that's one of the first times that smarter balanced interim assessment is, is offered. Um, and so those are the kinds of things that, um. You know, we're, we're trying to, generally, these are representative of the population. Um, and we do have a remote administration tool, but it is fair to say that we do. When there are students, we actually define whether they've assessed remotely or in person. And we have a secure browser to note whether or not they're not able to, you know, access other things. Um, but it's certainly something that we want to see. Um, and what it looks like in, in the regular school year environment, um, because of the, you know, but lots of things that we have been doing that we know work. Um, and so what would that look like? Um, without that. So. I do want to also bring your attention to something that is a personalized learning tool. That uh, students have access to in grades K through eight. Um, it is called success maker. It is not, it's an assessment, but it's sort of ongoing and students can work within it at any, at it. You know, on a fifteen minutes a day basis. So if parents are like, I'm really worried about my student, I don't really have the capacity to, to teach them math. I don't know what to do. Let me know. I'll connect you with a, a, a login. You should be able to already have access to it at your building level depending. Um, teachers just had PD just last, um, at the elementary level. Um. We are finding there's some folks that are making like, you know, we're hoping that they would make. Um, so the mid-year target for grade six would be great, six point five, so grade six and a half. Um, grade seven and a half. At this point in the year, we would want them to be like midway through seventh grade content. Um, and so these are, you know, this is based on that one success maker measure, but what kids. The success maker is a platform that's designed to kind of poke at the thing that the kid needs help with. Which is, it's motivating because the students can progress, but it, you keep seeing the kinds of problems that you need work with. So it's not necessarily reflective of the comprehensive. Um, assessment, but it's a good tool for kids to get really honed in on the things that are going to help them master the content material. Um, this is this percent of, the average growth of students from beginning to middle of year. So those that are engaging in the platform are making about, this is outside, above and beyond the regular school. This is the growth, only the growth that they're making in this platform. So they're averaging in sixth grade, um. You know, thirty-five hundredths. Um, you know, about a third of a grade levels growth. Um, which is from a third of the year seems to make sense. Um, again, that's, that's not the how they're, that's not their grade level target that's in this particular platform. But we do see students that are working with the platform are seeing some growth and it's reflecting in some of their work in the classroom as well. So I just wanted to share that tool with you and for those parents that are out there listening. Um. It may or may not be motivating to your students. Kids may like it, may not like it. Um. I have some kids that really love it and they want to get the, you know, little golden star at the end. Um, but if you're wondering and you're like, gee, I don't really know how to help them with math, this is a tool you can. You know, incentivize their work and our teachers and our principals are going to be doing a success maker challenge to help. Um, at the K two level, there's also Lexia, um. There, actually, we also have licenses for Alexia, which is another reading tool, um, that provides some information. I don't want to forget that we do have diverse populations in East Haven and I wanted to kind of tell a, a, a few other stories before we close. Um, currently, we have a total of two hundred and seventy-five English learner students in East Haven. These are not including students we know of that are newly registered, but haven't begun to matriculate yet. Um, so we are welcoming to them. English learners speak approximately nineteen different home languages. Um, in East Haven and in twenty twenty-one, we welcomed thirty-five newcomers. That means. Newcomer status is you've been in this country less than ten months. Um, or maybe just arrived from another country. So that's, that's newcomer status. So seventy new English learners to the district. Um, and recently we conducted loss links testing. This is with, there's a couple of, there's a couple of. Grade levels for whom, because the state reports the scores back to us. At press time, we haven't gotten all the scores back yet. But of the scores we have back, about fifty-three percent of students improved by at least one level and or subtest. And seven percent of all of our English learners met exit criteria on the last link's assessment. So. So what? Now what? What are we going to do? What is, what's happening? What do we do with all this data? And I talked to you through the different pieces and protocols. Um, one of the things we did do is we looked at the classrooms. And the teachers and the grade levels that were having the highest levels of growth. And we thought, we noted and we, we, we polled and we discussed and we had our building's leadership team. So schools reported. Especially at the elementary level. So this is an example of what we did. Is we sort of came up to a district data team and we said at the building level, they've identified those areas where. Grade levels had the most success. They were having high levels of implementation of our curriculum-based small group and differentiated instruction. So when we looked at that data, reporting high levels of alignment to those curriculum at tier one, small group instruction, they saw greater gains. So we know that works. We want to continue to do that. And so we are using some coaching cycles around small group design, helping teachers with planning templates that they can use to plan. Um, teachers participated and attended PD through their reviews of practice. They may be engaging in self-reflection. They meet and teacher-centered instructional data teams to identify, to look at the data and look at the kid and think about the instructional focus for that kid. Um. We welcome families to support communication. And where you need support with taking advantage of any personalized learning tools. Again, a computer does not replace a teacher, so we don't want to put. A kid in front of, um, just a platform, but in the, you know, if they're given some homework to practice. Um, or if there's sort of those, um. You know, center times where they may have some extra time, these are good tools that we want to support growth. And our support professionals are helping to create ongoing communication, shared understandings. So, um, accommodations for five oh fours and IEPs for regular education teachers. Um, and so we'll continue to take action and assess results. We recently did an intervisit protocol. So this data we, we've looked at and we've had these school level late data team meetings and then they've, I actually received another video file today from a, a. Building where they're working to hone in on some of these small group instructional tools. So we'll do a video intervisit where we'll look at that with our gr- broader group. And kind of refine some of the recommendations. And then we'll keep talking about it. We'll keep reflecting on kids. Um, and those, and those measures. I just want to remember though, this year. Don't forget everything else our kids are learning. Right? So our creative problem solvers, whether you're a remote or in-person learner. You might be, you might have learned how to troubleshoot a new digital tool that you've never used before. You might have had a new way to figure out how to go somewhere for help. As a powerful and effective communicator, I know so many kids, families, parents. Who have helped their children learn how to talk to their teachers and advocate for their needs. Um, worried that they were going to make their teacher mad and they decided, though, this is how I'm going to frame my email. I'm going to ask for what I need. Um, I'm really proud of those kids and I hope that if you're in the audience, I'm really proud of you and your families for really learning that. Um. Informed thinkers, they're getting up early every day to log onto remote classes or to get into school because they have to be driven because it's a different. The bus, you know, might be different this year or they have to get up earlier because there's fewer buses and longer routes. They're keeping track of all these assignments in multiple digital spaces. They are taking risks in online earning, learning environments, turning off their camera, having to look at themselves all day long in the camera. Managing loss and change, loss of senior milestones with a positive attitude and perspective. I can't tell you how many wonderful high school students have proposed really creative ideas to support each other in this, in this time. Um, and so I'm just keeping that idea that they're a responsible citizen, citizen every day, helping their families and communities. Mask wearing, kids are working to support their families or maintaining social distance in school. So there's a lot that we want to do in terms of reading, math and all of the assessments, but there is a leather picture. Um, of what we, that's harder to measure, but I just wanted to bring us back. And so I would invite at this time, any members of the community or attendees or anybody to ask any questions that they may have at this time. Mr. Stacy?
Yeah, Jen, great job. Um, and this is not a criticism. It's just a, a something. When you're showing us these, you know, um. At standard, above standard, below standard, and you're showing us a sixth, a seventh and an eighth grade, it's all in different students. I'd like to see it sometime at another, um. Uh, workshop maybe where we could see, like you take the class of twenty twenty-five and we see. Six, then what they did in seventh and then what they did in eighth. So we can see. Like the level of kids that were below reading level and to see where they are now in seventh. You know, maybe track that performance, um, and, and give us an idea of the same group of students as they move down the line. If that's something.
It's a great idea and I'll tell you, uh, Jack, the smarter balanced assessment. Um, is a lot easier to do that with because they allow us to track cohorts of kids.
Right.
Um, I do have, you know, we do have some changes, so I, I want to capture this year who took. Um, the smarter balance allows, if you move from New Haven, I can, it pulls into the system. Um, with our in, internal assessments, it's a little bit harder, but I can certainly. Um, I do provide some of that data and reflection for other school level, so I can share if you ever want to just, you know, set up a time. I do have one attendee. Um, who has a hand up. Ms. Vina guests? Go ahead.
Hi, how are you? My children are in fifth grade right now and I can tell you that. Uh, for the majority of this year, they've only been using applications to learn how to read. So they have not been using small group as much as they could have. And it was really initiated in the last two weeks where they're trying to use some breakout rooms. So I believe we should be supporting the teachers and how to use the technology better. To make those small groups function, because I've seen that they're not working as well as they should. In terms of sixth grade, seventh and twelfth grade reading levels. As a parent, I'm extremely alarmed at what I saw tonight. I don't want to see that ninth and tenth grade are catch-up grades to get a seventy percentile. Until, in twelfth grade. We should strive towards one mission, which is that every child in East Haven has to graduate high school. Knowing how to read and knowing how to do math. It's really critical.
Thank you.
The money. We have the money and we have the resources to make that happen now. So we should be doing more with what we have. And the columns that you showed, some of those, you didn't compare one style of assessment to another. And if you go to the State Department of Education. There are ways to translate what you showed from one assessment to another. And that was not shown and missing tonight.
Thank you. I appreciate your thoughts and I agree. We want to really work hard to make sure all students can, um. Can achieve at high levels in reading math and that our teachers have the capacity to engage in the small group instruction that we know is good for kids. So thank you. I appreciate that. Um, are, is there any other questions from, I see one more hand up, um, Mrs. De Palma? Let's see.
I'm sorry, are we, um. I, I, you know, we might have to, um, I'm sure that, are we moving on to the next meeting or, or we can?
Yep, I just, you saw, I saw you raise your hand, so that was my last set of questions. I think we had one attendee question unless you have a question, we can, I can.
Yeah, I can hold my questions for now too.
Okay. What time do we have a six o'clock?
I thought we did. I just was asking if, you know, we were going to move on because. That's all I'm going to.
Yeah. So I will conclude and I thank you very much for your time this evening. Thank you, Jen.
Great job, Jen.
Thanks, Jen.
Thank you.
We're going to open up the finance subcommittee at 6:10. We'll start out with review of purchase orders and invoices. Does anybody have any questions?
Well, I, I, I needed more time to go through. There were 47 pages this time, right? That was a lot.
I, I agree to you. It was, it was a lot. All right. Anybody with any questions? If not, we'll move on to the cafeteria report.
As you can see, um, the cafeteria is still doing a really good job, um, of feeding all of the students in the town. And currently their profits year to date are $568,194.
That's awesome.
Have any questions regarding this report?
I don't.
I don't. All right, we'll move on to school bus transportation recommendation.
So everybody hear me all right?
Yes.
All right, good. So, um, just some background on where this all started and how we got to where we are today. Um, we began starting the formulation of the RFP in September of 2020. Um, after some deliberation, the RFP was put out, RFP 2020 dash 1013 was put out on December 24th, 2020. We had a pre-proposal meeting on January 5th, 2021 with possible vendors. The deadlines for questions went out from vendors to come back into us was January 12th, 2021. Um, the pre-proposal was due on February 1st. We did a live zoom feed to open those because we couldn't allow guests inside the building. There was an addendum requested on February 25th, 2021, which I'll explain once I go through these dates. We received the addendum from the four original bidders on March 3rd, 21. We scheduled in-person meetings with all four of those bidders that took place on March 10th and March 12th of 21. Um, we are here tonight to present to you our recommendation on March 23rd and we'll proceed accordingly from this point. Um, the process was very thorough. Just so you all had known, I believe all of you know already, but when we received the four initial bids that came in. One vendor had required, uh, sent us an alternative bid. The alternative bid was on a reduced number of hours bill to us because when we had put out the RFP, it was used, we're using our current billing. So we're, we told them to give us pricing based on what we were paying our current provider. They came to us and said, we think we can do it for X amount of number of hours. So with that information, we contacted our legal counsel to make sure how we could proceed to make sure we can level the playing field to get that information across the board for all, all the other vendors. Legal counsel came back to us and said, we don't have to post it again, just go back to those vendors with the change in number of hours. So we did that and that's what they presented us with in the in-person presentations on Wednesday and Friday, March 10th and March 12th. Those in-person presentations that the team involved consisted of myself, Lynn, Erica, Bob Swan, who represented special education. Anthony Verderam to represent athletics, Vinnie, Vinnie Dinozzo as a school principal. Um, we had Jack Stacy and Michelle DeLucia involved and also, um, I believe, uh, who else was there? I'm missing somebody. I'll remember. I'm sorry. But unanimous decision for us tonight, based on pricing, based on overall. Quality for not only our students, but the bus drivers, our parents, our community is to put forth in front of you tonight, B and B transportation. I've reached out to all of the schools, school systems that they have, that they service, all receiving stellar recommendations. Um, I think this is going to be a positive impact for our community, for our school system, for our parents, for our teachers, for our students. It's an all around win. So I'll field any questions if you have any, or if anybody from the committee who is here would like to add to, to that, please feel free to step in. I think Erica has a question.
RJ, what, um, what other districts are using them? I just a couple of questions. Uh, what other districts are using them? And then I see it's, um, right now it looks like it's about a $49 per hour price difference from what they're offering. Are about, about, um, contractually, what is that? What is that a savings yearly for us?
So we don't have an annualized number tonight. What I'm asking tonight for is for the board's permission for us to use B and B as a vendor and move forward in the negotiation process. We haven't talked numbers with them. We want to come to you guys first, get approval to move forward. With your approval, we will then contact B and B to set up negotiations to start going with the process. So I can't give you an annualized figure, but it will be a decent savings for us yearly.
And then as far as the districts that are currently using them?
So Bethany, Amity, Woodbridge were the three that I contacted. They're based out of Bethany. So those are the three home, home schools. Um, a side note is they're, they're very selective that we learned in our presentation. And, um, Michelle and Jack, if you want to step in a little bit, they had both expressed to us that they're very picky. In the towns that they go out to bid for, they're not a bus company like a, like a national firm where as soon as the town goes out to bid, they're automatically going to put a bid on it. They came in our town, they analyzed our roads, they made sure we can, they can service us properly and put a competitive bid together. So with that and the town's recommendations, that's why I feel very comfortable coming to you tonight with that recommendation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, um, I'll just add, it's Jack, I'll just add that, um, in their presentation, um, they, they really were familiar with the town. And with what was needed. And, um, I was just amazed that they kept questioning, how come we were paying this much? And how come it took so long to get, you know, how come a bus was seven hours for Lyman Hall? I believe it was seven hours. I can't remember. And they thought they could do it in five and a half to six hours. And, you know, it was those kinds of things that kind of won me over. Um, and, um, then on a lighter note, the fact that the woman who's president of the company said, the best thing about East Haven was our Aunt Jeanette wars and she comes every year. So I thought that was, that was pretty neat, but, uh, no, they, they were great. They were a family company, uh, and, and very concerned. The other thing is, uh, Anthony Verderam questioned them about athletics and they stated they have never, ever left a team. Um, as you know, in athletics, one bus will take the team and then another comes to pick them up. Um, and they have never, ever not, um, you know, gotten back to pick that team up on the scheduled time. So, um, they, they were good. That's all I got.
What I liked about their presentation is, um, their sort of core values, which, which is a driver for every bus every day. Um, and they talked a little bit about their recruitment process for drivers and wages to ensure we're competitive. And also incentives for drivers. And they had some really creative strategies for not only recruiting and retaining, but rewarding drivers for, um, different, uh, commitment levels, um, for the organization.
Lisa has a question.
Go ahead, Lisa. You're muted. Lisa, you're muted.
All right, here we go. Thanks.
Here we go.
Um, I was not able to, um, view the presentation. Sorry about that. Um, my only concern RJ, and this is just longstanding, the, the, the issues we had throughout the years. My only concern is that if we choose this company, that we just are really on top of things from the get-go. And we really hold the accountability like up at first and foremost, you know, are just something that we make it very clear to them because we cannot have nonsense go on year after year as we had throughout this last contracts. You know what I'm saying? So if we can make sure that we're on top of it, that's, that's all I can ask for as a parent, as a, as a board member, as a community member, you know what I mean?
Absolutely. So I can tell you that in talking with them in that presentation, that was one of our requests that, um, over the first year, we make some changes to our bus routes to make sure they're running more efficiently. And it's also to have a bus route listing for our parents. So our parents know where the bus should be at a certain time. Um, that's going to be our first year goal and B and B has committed themselves to working on that for us with, right within our first year. So they understand what, what we're saying. Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Um, just other towns, I'm in another district, but they have like the, the, the school bus company will have like a, I want to say maybe like a, a parent kind of tree. So to think, so to speak, like a phone tree where you don't have the parents go crazy and calling the company like 75 times in the morning, first thing. There's like a group that was, um, established. I'm, I can look into it and see what each, you know, part of the town and district, how it was made up of. But I'm going to look into that because I think that as a board member, the, the company chairperson would call me all the time and explain to me, Lisa, they can't be calling me. For like an hour straight, I have to get the bus drivers out on the road. I gotta get going. So maybe, maybe we can see what they have, if it's a similar practice, we can, you know, adapt to that, you know? And yeah, 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 you know, you know what I mean, how it takes you a minute.
Absolutely.
All right, cool. I'll look into it. Sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Michelle?
Yeah. Didn't B and B have the program where the parents could just check online exactly where the bus was?
I don't believe so. So I think what B and B does is, um, that won't be implemented in the first year. I think that's, that could possibly be in year two.
Okay. Cause I know they talked about it. They, they.
So I, I believe what they do is they're going to, they're going to go out and do our runs and document the times. So we should have a, a document that says, you know, stop one, bus three, eight, eight, 10. Stop two, eight, 12. And that'll be out there for parents and they, they commit themselves to, to that timeframe. And other, other towns that I spoke with, I brought that up and they said, the times they put out, they're pretty strict on getting there at, at that exact time.
But didn't they comment about something when buses are running late, the parents will not have to call the bus company? They're going to be able to access that information on their own? It wasn't B and B that day that said that?
I don't believe so.
That's great though, Michelle. If you could do that, that would be great.
I don't, I don't think B and B was the company with the, the online tracking system. But if they have GPS in their buses, then there might be a way to link that. And like RJ said, you know, it was in year two where we were going to insert some technology like potential tracking and or, um, automation of, of bus route software.
I think that would alleviate a lot of issues for, you know, families, uh, especially when you're not sure if you missed the bus or not. I've had many of those mornings where I'm like, are we late or are we early? I'm not sure if the bus went yet, or you know, if it's still coming and it would be great not to have to try calling when everyone else does. And you get that busy signal and I'm sure every, all of my, you know, board members or parents know that. And, uh, just be able to take a quick look, even for an app.
I got, I got a couple of questions, RJ.
Yep.
Um, did they talk at all about the age or the kind of buses we're going to get and?
They'll be ordering us a brand new fleet. Every, every bus will be brand new.
Okay.
So, yeah.
They talk about where they're going to house them and did, do they try and keep our current drivers?
Absolutely. So they're going to work out a lease agreement to stay in the same location. Um, as soon as we can get a contract squared away, you know, the sooner the better for them because they have to go purchase all the brand new buses. And they will go out and purchase the, the fuel to lock in the, the price for, for themselves. Um, as far as the drivers, they have every intent to keep every single driver as long as the driver will stay with, with them. Um, I believe they will compensate them very fairly to make sure they are valued. Cause we expressed to them that, that the drivers know our routes the best. And you know, this is a people, you know, we're doing it for the drivers, the students, the community. So they know the importance of keeping our staff there. And I think they are ready to commit to keep them there from, from the same perspective.
All right. Go ahead, Michelle. What's up?
Sorry, it was still, uh, my hand was still up. But anyways, wasn't it part of the RFP for the drivers to stay?
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay.
They will make every effort to keep them. It's the driver's prerogative if they want to stay.
RJ, it's Jack. Wasn't it B and B that actually was, um, commenting on the fact that, uh, uh, they were amazed at the, the number of drivers we had. And the, the, the number of years that the drivers had consistently been with us. Um, and they thought that was terrific and that, you know, that was something they were looking forward to working with these really experienced. I think they said we had drivers for 20 and 30 years, um, driving for us. So, and they had already, uh, checked all that out prior to coming in to talk to us.
And one, one final note, um, is that, you know, one of our main focuses in these interviews was customer service. And responding to questions and concerns in a, a respective productive manner, even if the outcome wasn't what, you know, a parent and administrator desired. So, um, they talked a little bit about their customer service responsiveness. And what's really interesting is, you know, you get the owners, B and B. And they're, um, responding to concerns and to parents. And so you're not fighting up the chain, um, of a very large, um, national corporation for support answers guidance.
To piggyback off of that, Beth and Brad are the owners. That's the B and B. Beth handles all the dispatch. So like, if you have a question on anything, you're talking directly to the owner. And Brad is the master mechanic for the, he's been the master mechanic of the state of Connecticut for somewhat of over 20 years. So he ensures you that all your buses are going to be out and functioning. And they kept telling us over and over again, our name is on the side of that bus and we value it more than, more than you can think. So it felt like a good fit for East Haven.
Lisa, you got your hand up, Lisa?
No, I'm sorry. I was telling Bob something about an old student that lives across the street. I'm sorry. He's an old student of ours.
All right. All right. Anyone else have any questions? All right. Next thing, J A E unit tenancy.
So J A E is, um, our maintenance garage, our maintenance department does not have their own shop. So we rent the space on Short Beach Road. Um, our new rent, they, they came to us, we currently pay, uh, $650 a month. Our lease is up April 1st, a new payment. They would like to go up to $800 per, per month, starting April 1st for the next 12 months. So we need to have Erica sign that and get that back to them with our April payment if we choose to stay there. Our, our maintenance does not have any other place to go. So I recommend that we continue this lease until we can think of any other options.
All right. Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I just want to ask Tom, um, or Art too, is that a standard, you know, increase? Is that something that's, you know? Seems pretty significant, but is that something that's standard?
For the size of the space and what we have, yes. I mean, we don't really have any other options to make a move at this point either.
Okay.
Um, if, if, if we were to say no, we would have to pull everything out of there in a short period of time and we have no rest to put it.
We had this, we, we went through this a bit ago. We actually, everyone was on board with doing the same thing because it would cause too much stress and disruption. But, you know, 250, so I wasn't sure if you thought that was a little amount. I don't really know what the standard is. So I just wanted to ask you, but.
With that being, with that being said, I, I, I will say, I think in the future, we need to look at some other housing options for this, where we shouldn't rely on this.
I, I agree.
Try to get some long, long-term planning in place that may make sure we can provide them with some space here.
Tom.
Go ahead, T. What's up?
Thanks. Um, I, I agree with Lisa on that too. And I think we should look at something, something else too. I know it's COVID times, maybe there's small, I don't know, they need some, some assistance and we're trying to help out here. But it also came to us in, in February, right? So we're like, we wouldn't have time now to, to, I, I'm just confused as to why it's coming now, right? If they, you know, it's, it's March. What is it today? I put it on the board tomorrow, it's the 23rd. That's all I'm saying. Not, I'm not like saying, oh, somebody did something wrong, but we really don't have an option right now based on the timeframe. So I'm not sure, you know, it's one of those.
Honestly, Tia, I don't think I personally received it until.
Sure you didn't, but.
After the last board, board meetings, this was our next option was tonight.
Yeah.
But I, I agree with you.
Yeah. And that, that the other fact is we have so much space around, I don't know, we, you know. Yeah, and that that the other fact is, we have so much space around, I don't know, we, you know. There must be someplace we can store, you know, do these, you know, handle a place to do this work. Is it work that they do there or they're just storing things?
It's. I recall it being storage, Tia, I I agree with what you're saying too, and I think that was it too, that we had the, we had the ample space, but it was about time and the availability of. You know, staff and so forth, so we just left it as is, I you probably remember how that went down, but.
I I do, that's what I'm saying, we had time then to start looking and I guess we just didn't act on it.
Yeah. But I agree with you, we definitely should think about looking forward and getting some other options.
Hi, Jack.
I'm good.
Is this a one-year lease? I mean, it's eight hundred dollars, I mean, um, we're not locked into this for more than a year?
Correct.
No.
Okay, so so that's fine, so we do it and then we start looking, I think that'll be okay, thank you.
Erica?
I would, uh, I was just gonna say that I agree um with us looking, I believe the last time that these um leases came up. The other ones were similar to this price point, and I thought one of them like included electricity or something like that. So I would agree with looking or maybe even having Vinnie look into the other options, because I think three of them came the last time. And they were in this ballpark and some included electricity or some didn't and. And I know we didn't want to pay this price point the last time, so.
I I I think if we're gonna look at anything, we should probably try to get them back. On our own grounds. Um, I understand leasing is the easiest way to go. The amount of space that they have, like, they they do store, but this is also their shop, so if something breaks, this is where they're going back and trying to fix. And they're mounting their plows and they're fixing the plows in the winter, so they they need some kind of storage and space to work, so I think. For the amount of size that they need, this is a, it is a quick fix. But if we are gonna, you know, go down the road of trying to explore other ways, I think maybe. Bringing back in-house may be the best way to go as as well with with our space that we currently have.
Alright, T, you got your hand up, you have a question?
Oh, I thought I put it down, I'm sorry.
Alright, large format display bid.
So I'm gonna let Randall take that one, Randall came to present to you guys, because he knows a lot more about this than us, or me at least. Randall, there he is.
Hi, good evening, everyone. So just a brief history lesson, if I may. Um, and when the East Haven High School was constructed, there were a large number of television sets installed, and they really served two functions. They served as a large format display to to support instruction and the computer video could be shown on the television. But with the limitation of a nineteen ninety-five technology. You know, there were standard definition cathode ray tube thirty-two inch televisions, what we would consider old school square TVs. And it meant the text on those TVs had to be very large to be readable. And the TVs also served corridors and common spaces to display video bulletin board and clock. That served us very well for many years and in also an extensive video distribution infrastructure was part of the building when it opened. It allowed television signals from the head end room, the TV studio and the gymnasium to reach all of the sets. And that allowed for video announcements and the live streaming of special events to classrooms. And if I fast forward a couple of decades, by twenty fifteen, about eighty-five percent of all US households had high-definition televisions. And consumers enjoyed the sharpness of picture, greater color range and the wide uh widescreen aspect ratio. And I would say by that point, the TVs in the the high school were, had reached the end of their service life. Educators also discovered that high-definition televisions made really good large format displays, they're often less expensive than LC LCD projectors. And they're much easier to set up in a classroom, you don't have to worry about a stand, you don't have to worry about focus, you don't have to worry about shadow lines when you walk in front of them. Or a very expensive bulb when they're replaced. So East Haven began adopting high-definition television sets several years ago and has equipped most instructional spaces in the middle school with sixty-five inch sets. With a school improvement grant in twenty eighteen. And we're currently equipping most elementary classrooms as part of a PEG PETA grant, and soon every K to eight classroom will have a large format display for instruction. So the finance office recently secured bids for sixty-five inch. Four K ultra-high definition televisions and mounting hardware for the classrooms at the East Haven High School. For the classrooms and a number of the communal spaces. And additionally, we received a proposal from HB Communications for the upgrade of the video distribution set at the high school. The proposal leverages all of the the existing cable that was originally installed in the buildings, the walls, which which is a huge value to us. Which is capable of the high-definition signal. But it replaces the electronics, which are not capable of distributing that. So this proposal includes parts, installation and the engineering services to ensure proper operation. And this proposal will allow us to distribute one high-definition signal. Consisting of an announcement kiosk to all the classrooms and the Carter TV sets. But it's also going to allow us to distribute high-definition signals from the TV studio control room. The auditorium, control booth, the gymnasium and one rolling cart. So this could facilitate the high-definition broadcast of news, announcements, presenters, athletic events and safety information to all sets in the building. So I'd like to consider two things. I'd like to consider that you accept the bids from Downstage Systems of North Haven. For one hundred twenty-two ultra-high definition TV sets and one hundred mounts for the East Haven High School. Totalling a little over a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, and they were the lowest bidder for this project. And it also requests that you consider the proposal from HB Communications for the high school cable TV upgrade for twenty-four thousand two hundred forty-three dollars. HB holds the Connecticut Colleges and Universities Contract for Audio and Video. And has completed projects for the East Haven Public Schools ranging from the original TV installation in the high school. To recent PA upgrades at uh the middle school and the high school.
Anybody have any questions?
Randall, can you just confirm that? This project will allow us to stream. Events on anyone or all of these TVs simultaneously at the same time, so. Let's just say, you know, we are in COVID times next year and we have to adjust. Um, our graduation or we want to have a pep rally. We don't have to assemble everybody into the gym, but we can live stream it into different sections or classrooms throughout the building where everybody can view. At the same time, the live action that's going on in in the gymnasium, so to speak.
Yes, that's a great example, this affords us really kind of tremendous flexibility to do live streaming. And live streaming of high-definition signals, so anything that's happening in the gymnasium, we can put any place in that building. And I suppose we could put it any place uh on 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 YouTube or Zoom or anything else, uh to that matter. And we will be able to do four simultaneous channels, so you could do something in the. In the in the gymnasium that goes to a certain part of the building, you could do something in the auditorium that goes to another part, you could have another. Piece originating from the TV studio that goes to an additional part. So yes, tremendous, tremendous flexibility for sure.
Good questions, Jack, this is probably for Erica or Tom, where would this funding come from?
This is all grant funding.
Thank you.
It's grant funding, but because of the size of the project, we wanted to bring you guys to the table to make sure you're aware and know what's going on.
Go ahead, uh, Bob, what do you got?
Randall, can I just ask a quick question about the accessibility of the units for students with um. Cochlear implants or other handicapping conditions visually impaired, visual impairments or that type of thing, is there uh? Is there stuff I can work with there?
For sure, I mean, because they are modern sets, they all support Bluetooth audio, for instance, and I know there are a number of adaptive technologies that make use of Bluetooth audio. I mean, you know, moving to this platform really brings us to the the modern world relative to large format display, so I think, again, we'd have a lot of flexibility. In addressing needs either in individual classrooms or in mass or the ability for a student to move from room to room. Um, using Bluetooth technology of of those display systems.
Thanks, Rem, I know, I know with some members of your team, we've done some cutting-edge work with individual students in schools. Who have significant um visual or hearing impairments, I just. I just want to continue that work, so if that's, that, this sounds like actually it'll up our game in that area.
Yeah, for sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, anyone else?
So I just want to be clear, so before we move on, there's two, there's two portions of this. One is to approve the bidding results for him to purchase the 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 actual units. The second is to move forward with the project of the HD up upgrade through HB Communications.
Okay. Alright. If there's no questions, move it on to buildings and grounds.
Thank you.
Tom, did you miss um walk-in freezer bid? Was that on the agenda?
Yeah, that's on their buildings and grounds.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Alright, guys, um. Actually, Tom, thank you for that, but I didn't, I wasn't sure you were you were breaking it up like that, so um regarding the walk-in freezer. I'm not sure, um, RJ, do you have that in front of you, because I wasn't sure I'd be going over that, I mean.
Yeah, so the walk-in freezer, Linda from Sedexo, can you hear me?
Yeah, I just thanked you for splitting it up, but I wasn't aware, I I actually, I recommended it and I I asked it to to happen, but. The last I heard is that it wasn't being split, so thank you, go ahead, RJ.
Absolutely, so Linda from Sedexo had approached us for these two items, one for the East Haven Academy, one for J M S. For walk-in freezers, we put them out to bid, we received four responses. The lowest bids were for warehouse store fi- fi- uh warehouse store fixtures. Um, broken down for J M S was twenty-two thousand seven ninety-nine twenty-eight cents. The academy was twenty-two thousand two fifty and five cents, coming to a total of forty, just over forty-five thousand dollars. When we had opened these and discussed with Linda, she is very familiar with this warehouse store fixture, she's comfortable with the product. Um, so I think it's a home run for all of us and it's fourteen thousand dollars on the the next bid received.
You said, you said Lynn, you said, RJ, I lost you, Lynn was fine with it, you said?
Linda from Sedexo, from from who handles the kitchens. Has handled, has done business with them before, so she's very comfortable using that.
Yeah, we have, actually, yes, absolutely.
And these, these funds will come out of this food service fund, so there's no general funded impact.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, next on the, it's not on the agenda, it's on my little agenda, I had sent Melissa a picture of the uh. Groundbreaking over at Farrar's School for the playscape, I'm not sure, Melissa, if you were able to um. Upload the picture. It may not seem like much, but it is a beginning, so I I'm actually very happy with that. I was there again today, it looks, it looks good, I mean. It's a slow pace, we're moving. RJ, were you able to hear me or no?
It is, it's it's great progress moving along, great, the the weather seems to help us a a a great bunch here, so.
Okay, do you have anything additional on this, other than that they have broken ground, I mean, anything I?
I think, I I think everything has been ordered and is on its way or if not in the, in their uh possession in Branford. So it should be moving its way over to our container at Farrar's shortly.
Okay. Um, I haven't really had to meet up updates other than uh some from um. Anthony, um, some sports purchased several loads of clay for baseball softball fields. Purchased new fence toppers for baseball, will be working with public works to repair. All East Haven High School dugouts and storage sheds. Fencing for East Haven High School baseball and softballs, waiting on materials for fabrication and then insulation. We expect our East Haven High School facility to be completed renovated by spring recess. Which I think is awesome, because I think everyone was really worried about that. Um, the sound system at East Haven High School is nearly complete and we are currently fine-tuning as we speak. Maybe completed by Tuesday's meeting, which I don't think that has occurred and I'm reading my notes out loud. Um, can I have an update on that from the East Haven High School?
I know it was working for the game on Friday, so I don't know if it was fully complete or, but it was working, working very well at that.
Okay, great, thank you for that, I appreciate it. Um, other than that, did anyone else have any updates for me? For um, proper notekeeping on any other school that did not um get back to me?
We do have a couple assets here for disposal tonight. Um, from the culinary pro, pro, one from the culinary program and two from the kitchen at the high school.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Um, I don't have anything additional and I thank you very much, everyone, for your time.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, Tom.
Alright. If that's it, we're gonna call for a motion to adjourn.
Do we have any, do we have any more informa- I mean, okay, we have asset disposal culinary and kitchen, what is that, we're disposing of?
So in your packet, you should see, um, there's a list, I believe there's. One item from the culinary program, two from the food service pro program.
Okay.
On functioning, the serial numbers that we use for tracking our fixed assets is also attached in pictures. We we just can't dispose of them without getting approval from from the board.
Okay, I just wanted it brought up, so anybody else who's listening understands what we're talking about, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll make a mo- make a motion to adjourn. Motion in the finance commi- subcommittee.
Second, Mary Ann.
I'll fall to um order this evening's meeting and we'll begin with the pledge of allegiance. The pledge allegiance. To the flag.
Flag.
United States of America. And to the republic. For which stands. One nation. Under God. God. Indivisible. Indescribable. With liberty and justice for all. Alright, thank you, Melissa, could you do roll call for attendance, please? She's coming on, she just, she was frozen for a second. Oh, okay.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Sorry about that. Tia De Palma?
Here.
Jennifer De Longo?
Here.
Lisa Geraci Anastasio? I don't see her, maybe she got disconnected. Tom Hennessy?
Here.
Tom Murtaugh?
Here.
Mary Ann Pellegrino?
Here.
Erica Santiago?
Here.
Jack Stacy?
Yeah.
And Michelle De Lucia?
Here.
Um, I'll keep an eye and see if Lisa comes back on and I'll add her to the attendance.
Great, um, so we'll move on to reports for this evening, um. My chair report, um, just to remind board members, again, if they. Would like to have a subcommittee meeting the night of a regular meeting, to try to give the administration. At least a week's notice, the same as if you plan to schedule a subcommittee meeting. On a night different from the board meeting, you want to do so at least a week, so then Melissa could pull the board to see, uh, to check for attendance. And that's, that's my only reminder, I am happy to say last week we. Um, wrapped up negotiations with the Paris and uh we're hoping to, you know, get an approval vote for the tentative uh. Agreement within the week. And uh, that, that's all I have for tonight. Um, correspondence has been loaded to the drive, so I'm just gonna ask if there's any subcommittee reports. Jack, you muted yourself.
Athletics? Alright, right now, um, I'm looking, Anthony is, our our boys' basketball team is playing right now. Uh, with eight minutes to go in the fourth quarter, we lead twenty-nine, twenty-eight. Um, playing hand and tonight's winner goes to the semifinals, um, and it's pretty. Um, and it's pretty much, uh people agree that the winner of tonight's game probably will go all the way, these are the two top teams in the, in the bracket. Uh, also wanted to let you know, uh, let's see. The baseball and the band fields are being rolled, and Lisa made mention about the clay. Um, I was able to attend the boys' basketball and the cheerleading senior night, it went terrific. Unfortunately, I couldn't make the girls' basketball senior night, but I know that went well, it uh went as well, so. Middle school's spring sports, uh probably are going to start a week behind the high school, the high school should start this weekend, um Erica may have more on that, I'm not sure. And uh for baseball, the outdoor sports, baseball softball, um there'll be all fans, anybody could attend, you'd have to wear masks and practice social distancing. So that's it on athletics at this time, um, just want to congratulate all those seniors uh for great careers. Um, they persevered through some very difficult times in the winter sports, and uh let's go with our spring sports.
Thank you, Jack, uh Lisa, do you want to give a quick recap of buildings and grounds?
Yeah, just a quick recap, we, I showed a picture this evening, um regarding the groundbreaking of the playscape at Farrar's. It's coming out wonderful, um it is a, a wonderful beginning, um some information regarding our um equipment in the um cafeteria, um it's an update on the um athletic department, that's it, Michelle.
Thank you, um Santiago, do you have a update for either community outreach or policy?
Um, no, we don't.
Okay, uh, Tia, personnel?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um. Well, we can check the list of hires and rehires, um, you know, we have some, um, I believe a retirement coming. Um, which we can, do you, I can announce now, or, you know, Mrs. Um Forty can do that, if you would like. And you, you mentioned about the negotiations with the Paris, which we're happy about, and um custodians are coming up next month.
Great, all right, and I think that's, and Tommy, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I have no report, Michelle, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Tommy.
Sorry, Michelle.
Yes.
Erica, sorry, um, the only thing that I have to add, I guess, I don't know if it could be community outreach, or I can collaborate with Lisa for buildings and grounds. Um, just the um item that I have added for the April meeting, um for Tuttle School with the playground.
Mm-hmm.
And I could collaborate with Lisa after this, um, oh, that's all.
Just don't touch base with RJ before you put anything together, okay?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. And I believe that is all the reports, so we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Michelle, um tomorrow is the SAT uh school day for all of our juniors. Um, who across the state of Connecticut will take the SAT with makeup dates in uh April, so we're happy that we're administering this uh test this year. Um, tonight was our kindergarten information session um at Deer Run and Tuttle and Mamawgwin. And so we're hoping that we had a lot of our families for incoming kindergarten students um logged in and meeting with some teachers and principals to gather some information about kindergarten and um and registration. I'd like to congratulate our high school health occupation students of America. Um, four of our HOSA students attended and competed in the virtual HOSA two thousand twenty-one Connecticut Spring Conference. And two of our students earned uh two uh silver medals. So uh the four students took content-specific exams this year in all different categories. Um, and Juliana Anastasio and Carly Lynn won second place, uh earning a silver trophy and are now eligible to compete at the National HOSA Conference in June. So congratulations to senior Juliana Anastasio for second place in human growth and development. Uh junior Kaylee Lynn for second place in medical spelling. Our senior Kristi Lee uh for behavioral health, and a sophomore Amelia Westfall for pathophysiology. Um, we're really proud of them, and we wish them all the best uh as they move on to compete in the National HOSA Conference in June. Um, we continue to uh work on vaccinating our staff, we have another forty-plus individuals scheduled to be vaccinated on Friday, this Friday. Um, and the CDC and the state have issued guidance that individuals um two weeks past their second dose are fully vaccinated, so if they are considered a close contact are no longer required to quarantine, so that's good news for us and our, our adults. Um, and at this point, I am gonna turn it over to uh Mr. D'Nuzzo, uh welcome, Mr. D'Nuzzo. And Mr. D'Nuzzo is following up on a question that Jack had last week relative to students and seniors at the high school being admitted into college, and so he's gonna provide us with a, with a little update, Mr. D'Nuzzo?
Yes, thank you, uh hi, everyone, I hope you're all well, I hope everyone's families are well as well. Um, just um, the class of twenty-twenty-one uh has about two hundred and twenty students in the class, and uh as the acceptance letters start to come in, and they've been coming in for some time now, and they will be continuing to come in, we uh typically right around April is when our students start to get the the final notifications from any schools that they're waiting on. Um, however, just to give you an update of where we're at, uh to date, and as of today, we have about forty-six percent of our students who applied to four-year colleges and universities, that's about a hundred and one students that we have, sixty-one percent of those kids applied uh regular decision. And uh thirty-nine percent of those students uh applied either early decision or early action. So um keep in mind that while that forty-six percent is, is a fairly low number, we average around thirty to thirty-five percent of our students who attend community colleges and, and or two-year schools. Uh certificate programs at trade schools, those are rolling admissions, those processes start right after the first of the year into February, so um we do see a, a fair, fair amount of our population attend community college, and uh they are not factored into this uh, this data tonight. Um, we also have some positive news on the free application for federal student aid, also known as FASA. Um, typically, we average about forty percent of our students completing the FASA each year. Uh this year, a number of schools in the state of Connecticut, and we are, one of them are participating in the FASA challenge. Uh to date, we have uh fifty-one percent of the class of twenty-twenty-one has completed the FASA, so the goal was a five percent increase, and, and we have um far exceeded that, so um we're really pleased about that. Um, that is for uh students, and, and that application um is not closed either, so we still have students that we're recruiting to um, to apply for for the um financial student aid to assist with them uh getting into and attending the school of their choice. Um, some of that money can also be used for some of those certificate programs and some trade schools, so we're really pushing our students to do that, and we've had some, some really good success this year, um increasing those numbers. Um, the majority of our students um apply to schools in the Northeast, the Northeast is incredibly competitive. Um, and again, as I mentioned, many students don't begin to hear from their schools until early April. However, we, we do have some students that have some, um have already received acceptance, as I mentioned. You know, about forty percent of our kids apply early action, so um we have some, some uh schools and colleges that our kids have been accepted to. Uh, they are still waiting for financial aid packages to come through before they make their decisions. But just to give you an idea of where our kids have been accepted, and where we, we, we know of, at least a few who are attending um some of these schools of their choice, but um, in Pennsylvania, our students have been accepted to Penn State University and Temple University in Philadelphia. Uh in New Jersey, we have kids who've gotten accepted to Seton Hall University and Rutgers University. Um, in Rhode Island, we have students going to URI, uh Providence College and Rhode Island College. In Massachusetts, we have students accepted to the Massachusetts College of Pharmacy and Science, Northeastern University. Uh, both UMass uh Amherst and UMass Boston. Uh in New York, we have students accepted to Manhattan College and Clarkson University. Um, up further north in Vermont, and we have Castleton University and the University of Maine. Uh, here in Connecticut, a, as we typically do, Fairfield University, Con College in New London. Um, the four state university schools, Southern, Eastern, Western, and Central. Quinnipiac, University of Manhattan, and obviously the University of Connecticut. Uh, and then down a little bit further, South Elon University in North Carolina is one of the schools that um is a great school that one of our students got accepted to. We do have students waiting on acceptance letters from BU. Um, and some other students uh waiting on, on some of their uh acceptances from um some other schools in the Massachusetts area and, and, and Connecticut as well. Um, we do have some highlights this year, and, and, and uh some of the, the two students, we have two Ivy Leagues this year, both students will be attending. Um, we have student attending Cornell University. Uh, and she will be going into uh our, uh their engineering program, uh great engineering school. Um, so we're really excited about that, and we'll announce her name to the board at a later time and, and uh as well. And then we have a student attending Harvard. Um, he actually withdrew his applications to other schools that he applied to, because Harvard was his number one, it was an early action. He got in and then withdrew his applications to other schools, and I'm, he likely would have got into some of those as well. Um, so we've had some really great success this year, this class is a great class, and um, and they've left their mark here, and we still have a few months with them. But um they've done some really great things academically, and they're going to some really great schools um moving forward, so we're really excited and proud of our class of twenty-twenty-one.
Thank you, Mr. D'Nuzzo, appreciate you being here this evening and uh.
You're welcome.
Update.
You're welcome.
I don't have anything further.
Hey, um Assistant Superintendent Murray?
Um, Jack is raising his hand.
Okay.
Just, just a quick update, sixteen point seven seconds, the game is tied at thirty-eight.
All right, thank you. Um, where did, where was I, Jen?
Hello, everybody. Um, thank you to those of you that were able to attend our workshop to this evening. Um, we provided an opportunity for all of our um those individuals that were in attendance to uh learn about some of the highlights, a brief overview of our district assessment framework and alignment to the vision of the graduate. Um, we reported on some universal screening and benchmark data and literacy and math. And we provided a glimpse into some curriculum-based assessments and clarified how we're using different types of measures to inform instruction and practice. Um, we highlighted the, the different types of assessments, as well as the cycle of inquiry that we use to research how our students are performing, and then identify those key adult actions, uh take action and assess results. We talked about the school level and teacher-centered instructional data teams, where they're making decisions and identifying instructional folkai for the students. And the recording of that data will be made available linked to this report, which will be put online at a later time. Uh, one of the things that I did want to sort of reiterate to our families is that there's so many things that we are measuring. Um, and this year, students are not only learning, reading, writing, and math, but many, many other things, such as being a responsible citizen um by maintaining their safety and social distance, becoming an informed thinker by keeping in track, track of their assignments, troubleshooting digital tools, and finding where to go for help. Um, and being goal-directed by taking on new challenges like HOSA, or taking risks in online learning environment. And managing loss and change with positive perspectives, many of our seniors especially have lost out on key milestones, our sports programs are doing very well. So while we do want our students to perform at the highest levels on all of our um assessments, um we thank our families and our students for their resilience this year. Um, one thing I did reiterate is that if families are looking for some ideas on how to support their child's growth, we will be having a success maker challenge, um and Alexia challenge for those who are interested, as well as the district reading challenge. Um, one of the most important things that our students can do as much as possible is read, and I know many of our schools are having uh regular um bedtime story nights, I know Tuttle School does six-thirty bedtime stories on Wednesdays, the more we can get books in our kids' hands, the better. Um, and as you can see, there, there are some, there's some real benefits to that, to that reading. So aside from that, I'm also pleased to announce a potential partnership between Sacred Heart University and East Haven Public Schools. A team of us will have uh have met with our members of their faculty to propose a model that might include experiential practicum uh that would allow pre-service teachers to engage in facilitating some learning opportunities tutor, and a gold standard tutoring model for students, as well as possible literacy and numeracy labs. Um, I'm having some informational meetings with those potential interns, which may also lead to uh recruitment pipelines, or just engaging all of our faculty in higher levels of professional learning, so we're really pleased to explore those and other partnerships. Um, I'd also like to congratulate Ms. Laura Lynn, who as you may see in her um in your board packet today, who has announced her retirement. Uh, we wish her the best as she plans for new endeavors. Ms. Lynn's warmth and genuine caring was evident in, in all she did. She created many opportunities for families to connect, and really cared about her students and, and teachers. Most recently, she led an initiative to support teams at the middle school level, and helped uh to create a social emotional learning mindset class and developmental guidance curriculum at the middle school. While she will be missed greatly, she will leave a lasting legacy, and I wish her the best. Um, again, I want to reiterate our congratulations to our students who have been accepted into the post-secondary institutions or path of their choice. There's many paths to success. Um, I'm, I'm very pleased to hear um from Mr. D'Nuzzo, and thank you for that report. I also want to announce that in compliance with state statute, we are administering a foundations of reading survey that is required for all non-exempt K-three teachers to complete triannually. Um, eligibility was determined by current teaching placement and confirmed by principals. Teachers are gonna be taking this over the next couple of weeks, and we will have that data to support uh dynamic professional learning to meet the needs of students, to meet um early learning experiences for kids and make them the best possible. Our next curriculum advisory council meeting will be held on April twenty-seventh at four PM. The link to register will be in the assistant superintendent's report that will be in the packet. And finally, parents of students in grades K through five, hopefully, if you're interested in providing feedback on how we report teaching and learning at the elementary level, I'd like to recommend that you register for one of the um following offerings that will be linked um in this assistant superintendent's report. Um, there will be one focus group held on March twenty-fourth from four to five PM. Um, and the second focus group will be held on March twenty-ninth from seven to eight. Uh, we're asking the parents only attend one focus group, because it's designed to collect information from a parent, so the um, once we've received information and your feedback, um, we'll make sure to capture that. So I thank the board for their support um for teaching and learning this year and always, and I defer to you if you have any questions, or I send it back to Michelle.
Okay, did anybody have any questions? If not, well, we're gonna thank you, Jen, and we're gonna go ahead and move to um approval of meeting minutes. Do I have a, a motion for approval of regular meeting minutes on March ninth, twenty-twenty-one?
Make a motion to approve the min, minutes of three, nine, twenty-twenty-one, it's Jack.
This is Jen, I second it.
Okay, did anyone have any questions or comments? If not, I'm gonna ask Melissa to do a roll call vote to approve the meeting minutes, um the minutes for the regular meeting on March ninth, twenty-twenty-one.
Okay, Tia De Palma?
Yes.
Jennifer Delongo?
Yes.
Lisa Geraci Anastasio?
Yes.
Tom Hennessy?
Yes.
Tom Murtaugh?
Yes.
Mary Ann Pellegrino?
Yes.
Erica Santiago?
Yes.
Jack Stacy?
Yes.
And Michelle De Lucia?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
All right, next is approval of the consent agenda, so I have approval of invoices for fiscal year twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one in the amount of nine hundred and six thousand four hundred and seventy-nine dollars and sixty-eight cents, and approval of purchase orders over seven thousand. Do you have a motion?
Erica Santiago, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Tia De Palma, second.
All right, uh this time, I'm gonna ask if anyone has any questions. And if not, I'll ask Melissa for a roll call vote to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, Tia De Palma?
Yes.
Jennifer Delongo?
Yes.
Lisa Geraci Anastasio?
Yes.
Tom Hennessy? Tom Hennessy?
Yes.
Tom Murtaugh?
Yes.
Mary Ann Pellegrino?
Yes.
Erica Santiago?
Yes.
Jack Stacy?
Epstein.
Okay, and Michelle De Lucia?
Yes.
Okay, eight in favor, one abstention, motion carries.
That brings us to the audience of citizens portion of this evening, Melissa's or anyone here would like to speak?
Okay, if you would like to speak, please um use the raise your hand option. As well as stating your name and your address for the record, please. No one is raising their hand at this time.
Okay. Then we will move on to new business. Which brings us to seven point one, discussion and possible action on the approval of hires, rehires and stipends, do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the hired, rehired and stipends.
Have a second?
So, oh, sorry, are we in the discussion part, Michelle?
Yeah, I think we just got a second, who is the second?
Tia De Palma.
Yeah, okay, yeah, so at this time I would ask if there's any questions or comments. But Erica, yeah, why don't you lead us off?
I just wanted to congratulate Laura Lynn. Um, we wish her all the best in her retirement and thank her for her many years of service, not only in East Haven but in previous districts. Impacting the lives of so many children and families, so congratulations to Laura and and good luck.
Thank you, I I think we're all. Happy for her, but she will be missed.
Michelle, I think I'm trying to do the hand thing, it's not giving me an option, I just wanted to say a little something to.
Go ahead, Lee.
I just, we all know Laura's been here for with us for ten years, she has been in in. New Haven for many years prior to that, but it's been a blessing. Um, she's been an amazing principal, colleague and a friend, bittersweet sentiments, um. Everyone knows she began at Tuttle and then ended up at J M S, I just wanted to to state because it's a little emotional for me because she's such an amazing, amazing woman. An educator, um, I I I get a little, like I said, sad and emotional, I want her to retire and be happy and. Take that next journey, but she will be sincerely missed here, the moment that. It was made known that the amount of phone calls I received, I mean, again, bittersweet, um, she's impacted so many. Lives down to uh me as a as a as a mom and as a parent and it is as. As someone who provides our community, just to just to show her strong work ethic, her knowledge, her encouragement, her guidance. For mentoring countless hours of being there for our families, personal time. On the books, on whatever, she'll leave a lasting legacy and I just wanted to speak that because. Like I said, it's where she's gonna be forever missed and I wish her well on her next adventure. And venture endeavor in her in her future. Thank you, Ms. Laura Lynn, that's from all of the families in our district and. I want to speak on behalf of the board, but I don't want to put anything anyone's in anyone's mouths, but I do know that I have that blessing from our family, so. Thank you and I wish you well.
Okay, thank you, did anyone else have any questions or comments? Okay.
My book was enough, Michelle, right?
Yeah. Melissa, you want to do a roll call vote?
Yes. Tia De Palma?
Yes.
Jennifer Delongo?
Yes.
Lisa Geraci Anastasio?
Yes.
Tom Hennessy?
Yes.
Tom Murtaugh?
Yes.
Mary Ann Pellegrino?
Yes.
Erica Santiago?
Yes.
Jack Stacy?
Yes, congratulations to Laura Lynn, as I stated at my first meeting, it was Laura who guided me into education twenty two years ago, so. I thank her for that.
And Michelle De Lucia?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
That brings us to seven point two, discussion and possible action on the approval of the selected vendor for walk-in freezer. Erica, did you want to give us a little background or do we need any clarification or everyone should be familiar with this from subcommittee, so. If no one has any clarifying questions, I'll just ask for a motion.
So the motion would be to go with warehouse store fixtures for a total quote of forty five thousand, forty nine dollars and thirty three cents. To for the installation of a walk-in freezer at the middle school and the academy.
Alright, I I I motion to uh. Approve the vendor as stated. For the for the amount as listed on this way, um, Melissa, you could put that in the minutes, do I have a second?
Mary Ann, I will second that.
Okay, so now that the motion's on the floor, are there any questions or comments at this time? Alright, it looks like not, if not, then I'm gonna ask for a roll call vote.
Tia De Palma?
Yes.
Jennifer Delongo?
Yes.
Lisa Geraci Anastasio?
Yes.
Tom Hennessy?
Yes.
Tom Murtaugh?
Yes.
Mary Ann Pellegrino?
Yes.
Erica Santiago?
Yes.
Jack Stacy?
Yes.
And Michelle De Lucia?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Alright, that brings us to seven point three, discussion and possible action on the approval. Of B and B Bus Company for school bus transportation. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept uh B and B transportation for our school bus transportation.
Tia De Palma, I second.
Okay, so now the motion's on the floor, I'm gonna ask if anyone has any questions or comments. I know we discussed this at length in subcommittee. That they seem like the right fit for our district, so at this time, Melissa, I'm gonna ask for a roll call vote.
Okay, Tia De Palma?
Yes.
Jennifer Delongo?
Yes.
Lisa Geraci Anastasio?
Yes, um, I just wanted to say one thing, Michelle, Olivia, I couldn't get my hand thing again up. RJ, I just want to make sure that I'm gonna check in with you at a later date about what we spoke about, okay?
Absolutely.
Thank you, sorry about that, yes, so.
No problem. Tom Hennessy?
Yes.
Tom Murtaugh?
Yes.
Mary Ann Pellegrino?
Mary? Yes.
Erica Santiago?
Yes.
Jack Stacy?
I'm sorry, yes, we won in overtime.
Awesome.
Got it, um, and Michelle De Lucia?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor, motion carries.
Alright, that brings us to seven point four, discussion and possible action on the approval of the All American Maintenance and Cleaning negotiated. Year four and five rates. I think many, many of you know that when we uh approved the. Initial contract with All American and had a clause to renegotiate for year four and five and that is what we are here to prove this evening.
Uh, Erica Santiago, I make a motion to approve All Americans um year four and five rates.
Tia De Palma, second.
Okay, alright, so at this time I'm gonna ask if there's any questions or comments?
I'd just like to comment that um I appreciate all of American, uh, all Americans hard work and the um. The length that they've gone to help this district thus far, especially during the pandemic and all that they've done to help us, um. And the great length that they've gone, so, thank you.
Agreed, Tommy?
Are you gonna say what the rates are?
It's a two percent in- increase for year four and another two percent increase for year five.
Alright, thank you.
Did anyone else have any questions or comments, Lisa?
Can't get the hand thing to work, I'm sorry, no, Tom, I just want to make sure you're all set, did you have anything to ask or? Or anything you were concerned about some?
No, I'm good.
Thank you, and Erica, thank you for that and I. I did everything you said, thank you.
Okay, did anybody else have any question or comments about the negotiated rates? Alright, so then if no one has anything to say, I'm gonna ask for a roll call vote.
Okay, Tia De Palma?
Absolutely, yes.
Jennifer Delongo?
Yes.
Lisa Geraci Anastasio?
Yes.
Tom Hennessy?
Yes.
Tom Murtaugh?
Yes.
Mary Ann Pellegrino?
Yes.
Erica Santiago?
Yes.
Jack Stacy?
Yes.
And Michelle De Lucia?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor, motion carries.
Seven point five, discussion and possible action on the approval of the J Unit Tennessee Agreement. Tennessee, Tennessee, I'm sorry, agreement. Do I have a motion?
Tia De Palma, make a motion for approval to approve the J A E unit tenant.
Uh, Mary Ann Pellegrino, I will second it. Alright, so at this time, does anybody have any questions or comments?
And this is just for um, just an additional, just a one year lease, bringing us to um, April first, twenty twenty two.
And yes, and I think we should all think, consider that we almost immediately start looking for something better.
Yes, agree.
Okay, any other questions or comments? If not, Melissa, I ask for a roll call vote.
Tia De Palma?
Yes.
Jennifer Delongo?
Yes.
Lisa Geraci Anastasio?
Yes.
Tom Hennessy?
Yes.
Tom Murtaugh?
Yes.
Mary Ann Pellegrino?
Yes.
Erica Santiago?
Yes.
Jack Stacy?
Yes.
And Michelle De Lucia?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Okay, brings us to seven point six, discussion and possible action on the approval of asset disposal. Do I have a motion?
Tia De Palma, I make a motion to um. Approve the asset disposal.
Mary Ann Pellegrino, I second the disposal of the assets.
Okay, so at this time, is there any questions or comments?
Yes, yes, thanks, I kind of missed, I I had no Jack had chimed in earlier.
You just muted yourself, Lee.
There you go. Jack had touched on it earlier about, and you showed us that we have the copy in our packet, but. Is it just informational, you're just sharing with us because there's been some issues in the past, or you just something additionally, something new, what is it? We've never been given like a packet like this on disposing, so I wanted to know, is it because of more, it needs to be more informative to everyone, I mean.
We should not be disposing of assets without your approval.
Yeah, no, we usually do approve them, I think she's just saying the quantity of of them possibly, am I right?
Yes, and also the, we have like, this is the printout piece too, correct? Just the notification, so it's at length and it's great because we haven't had that in the past, so. Great, okay, thank you. More is better, more is better.
Absolutely, Mary, absolutely.
Okay, any other questions or comments? No, okay, at this time, Melissa, then if there's no other questions or comments, can you do a roll call vote on asset disposal, please?
Tia De Palma?
Yes, yes.
Jennifer Delongo?
Yes.
Lisa Geraci Anastasio?
Yes.
Tom Hennessy?
Yes.
Tom Murtaugh?
Yes.
Mary Ann Pellegrino?
Yes.
Erica Santiago?
Yes.
Jack Stacy?
Yes.
And Michelle De Lucia?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Alright, that brings us to our last agenda item for this evening, seven point seven, discussion and possible action on the approval. Of large format display installation. If um, we discussed this in in a subcommittee, but Randall, do you want to give a little? Summary for the regular meeting?
Well, there are two parts, um, one one involves basically upgrading the infrastructure of the high school. From a traditional now legacy standard format television. Signal to high definition signals. Um, by reusing the existing wiring and replacing the electronics and we have a proposal from H B Communications to do that. And the second part of this is to accept bids from a North Haven company for to. To provide sixty five inch and larger um H D TVs and mounts. To be installed in the high school by our staff.
Thank you, Randall, um, I know this is grant funded and usually does not require board approval. But due to the scope of the project, um, we did want to bring it to the board, so if uh. Someone wants to make a motion and then if you have any questions or comments.
Tia De Palma, I motion for the um, to take action on the approval of the large format display installation.
I second it.
Thank you, that was Tom Murtaugh that seconded, um, and at this time, I'll, does anyone have any questions for Randall while we have him? Tommy?
What grants being used to pay for? Do you guys hear me?
Randall's frozen, I think, oh, no, oh, sorry, you're very still.
I am thawed, to to the best of my knowledge, the Esser Grants will be used to fund this.
Is that true?
I I think that, yeah, is the hardware coming out of Alliance Grant, though?
That that is what we discussed, yes.
I know, I'm not, I'm not trying to be fractious, which is it?
It's Alliance.
For the whole thing?
Um, I believe the hardware is. Is Alliance, Lynn, can you confirm where, I don't want to misspeak here, can you confirm where?
I think I'm frozen, can you hear me?
Yeah, we are working here.
I have really bad reception, I keep going in.
Okay.
The Alliance Grant is going to cover the cost of the hardware and it was Title One for the um upgrades.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Did anyone else have any questions or comments? Alright, I'm not, do we need to uh post, do we need to motion for approval? And we vote, take a vote?
I don't think you've done the roll call vote yet.
No, do we, do we need to, being that it's grant funded, or you'd like us to?
Yes, we'd like.
Okay. Alright, so at this time, discussion, uh, I mean approval, somebody wants to, do we do the motion? Yes, right, yeah, we did.
Yes.
Alright, so I, Melissa, if you could do the roll call vote for approval of the large format display installation, that would be great.
Okay, Tia De Palma?
Yes.
Jennifer Delongo?
Yes.
Lisa Geraci Anastasio?
Yes.
Sorry, I think I hit mute as you were unmuting or, uh, Tom Hennessy?
Yes.
Tom Murtaugh?
Yes.
Mary Ann Pellegrino?
Yes.
Erica Santiago?
Yes.
Jack Stacy?
Yes.
And Michelle De Lucia?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Alright, that brings us to the end of. Alright, that brings us to the end of our meeting. If anyone would like to discuss future agenda items, we could do so now or of course always email myself or the superintendent.
Michelle, I'd like to, um, again, my apologies on the no hand thing. I would like to add on the agenda for next meeting, just a possible discussion about, um, I lost you guys a second, one second. I don't know if you can see me, but um, the this thought about, there you go, sorry about that, the substitute um matter. I had talked about just different options, third-party um companies. I just have some concerns about the quality of substitutes we are bringing into our schools and the just the quality, n- nothing's happening, our students are not receiving the proper education throughout the day. And I get it that there's subs, but there is other programs that I've looked into in different towns that have proper vetting, that the the um, the subs are trained and so forth. And that's what our district needs. I know we're only two months, but it's two months that alright, two months that is needed. So I apologize about the other noise, but yes, I'd like.
I think we're gonna have that at the next uh Personnel Subcommittee meeting for the first meeting in April, because it's not really an actionable item at this time if we're just gonna be exploring options. And I believe we actually do funnel substitutes in from several uh different sources between uh ventures with the colleges as well as our internal in-house. We don't use it outside.
I know, I know, this is that, but, this is that, but it needs to be, it needs to be honed in maybe to this one actual company. I don't, I think.
Well, we don't use a company. We, we don't use a third party. We, we don't use a third party, it is in-house. And I believe there's just some partnerships with some of the colleges at this time. Is that correct, Jen?
Jen Piercy or Jen Murray?
Murray.
No, no, our partnerships with colleges are pre-service teachers, so currently you are um.
Yeah.
They're for tutoring, but there are subs at this time where there's a waiver that they could be eighteen years old. So we certainly recruit actively with partnerships with universities to to, but they still have to apply in-house and be vetted in-house. We can.
It's the quality, okay, so we need to, we need to look into this further, that's all, okay? Whenever you decide to put it on there, fine, but it needs to be explored, okay?
Yeah, it's it's on for the next subcommittee for about, for um personnel.
And I I support that, that's fine.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Michelle, I don't have a future agenda item, but I'd like to request that the board start meeting in person. Back at, back at, you know, back at the high school.
I would love that.
Going back to meeting format prior to COVID.
Are we shooting that for the first uh meeting in April?
We can, we can. For the first week meeting in April, that works.
Somebody is, somebody, I'm getting such loud shrieking feedback here, which is, I'm gonna say thank God that we're gonna go back to meeting in person. Um, but, see, it's gone, thank you, whoever. It was really hurting my ears. Maybe I'm ultra-sensitive, but thank you. Okay, well, we could send out um some to the board, making sure everyone gets a ten. But otherwise, we have that um clause that they can join online as well if they're not able to attend in person. And our next meeting is April thirteenth, twenty twenty-one at six thirty for finance and our regular meeting at April thirteenth, twenty twenty-one at seven. And we're going to add a Personnel Subcommittee at six P M on April thirteenth as well.
Thank you.
In person, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Tia De Palma, yes, I motion to adjourn.
Mary Ann Pellegrino, I second that motion. Great, thank you. Good night, see everybody in a few weeks.